Good morning, everyone. Thank you. It's nine o'clock and on this wonderful day, November fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-three, and City Council is convening in City Council chambers, an open session this morning. We begin with item number one, yes, as we will be conducting a public hearing in accordance with Article Four, Section One of the City Lubbock Charter regarding Creating Freedom Act Lubbock, including measures to reduce enforcement of low-level marijuana offenses. We do anticipate, once we're done with the public hearing, we will close the public hearing and then we will move into executive session immediately after that. And then, once we're done with the executive session, we'll come back into for our regular session. All right. So at this time, the Lubbock City Charter requires that a public hearing be held on any ordinance that is presented to the City Council by the initiative process. Item one is the public hearing to receive public comment on the possible adoption of ordinance that would decriminalize possession of low levels of marijuana, which is item three on today's agenda. All right. So many of you have probably done this before. If you haven't, we will first start with any that we will open the public hearing and begin with any of which to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance. And then, when we close those in favor, we will move to those against. And then, once we're done, we will close the public hearing. I will remind people, as we do on some of these topics, please stay on topic, please get your point with minimal delay, please avoid repetition, and always be respectful of fellow citizens' opportunity to speak, whether you agree or disagree. All right. So at this time, the public hearing is now open. Any wishing to speak in favor, you may approach the dais. Please state your name and your address when you before you begin speaking.
My name is Aunt Keel, and I am with Freedom Act Lubbock. Okay, I'm a little short, a little short. Good morning, council. My name is Aunt Keel, and I am back again to be one of the voices for the ten thousand five hundred and forty signatures that we have collected. Whether we all did our factual research on laws and regulations or not, I come to remind each and every one of you how many signatures we have collected and how much support this petition does have. While not only has our petition served its purpose, our team has encouraged hundreds of citizens to register to vote. It was questioned last meeting whether the city had jurisdiction to imply this petition. And may I remind everyone, this is the same type of petition that was that the city used for Sanctuary City. We just surpassed the numbers by three times the needed amount. Ten thousand five hundred and forty citizens of the city have spoken and will continue to support this ordinance once it has reached the ballot. While it still seems to be a confusion on the definitions of legalization and decriminalization, we are not asking, oh, thank you, we are not asking the city to legalize marijuana, but to simply decriminalize any anything under four ounces. We are not asking you to decriminalize pounds of marijuana, but to simply utilize police resources to other major crimes, such as the high property crime rates here in the city. LPD has repeatedly stated that they do not have enough staff. Detective Davidson, who was a once-retired investigator, had to come back part-time to even help with investigations. The district attorney's office has made numerous reports of not having enough prosecutors. The arrests with the deputy chief sheriff McClure was arrested with narcotics. That was overlooked by LPD's own statistic through the public information requests that we've requested, showing that they arrested people of color by twenty-nine percent, Latinos by forty-nine point one percent, while the white population is only sitting at twenty-two point eight percent. The Marijuana Impact Report, prepared in conjunction with Ground Game Texas and Lubbock Compact, used the City of Lubbock's data, demonstrates significant disparities of marijuana enforcement over the past five years, with a disproportionately negative impact on community members who are black, Latino, and/or under the age of twenty-six. From a report a City of Lubbock resident states, "I personally have seen how marijuana enforcement unfairly targets people of color. This report shows how my story is not unique. Instead, too many black and Latino residents of Lubbock have been hurt in the same way. I want to see our black and Latino communities thriving, not suffering. We should adopt a policy to decriminalize marijuana to ensure the city is not perpetuating the generational harms caused by racially biased enforcement." This resident of Lubbock so happens to be a medical cardholder who has been racially profiled and questioned by police, but to dismay knew the laws protecting her, so as a medical cardholder, she, who is also my wife, who I will protect as much as any other minority in this community. Some of our citizens cannot afford basic necessities, yet alone a two hundred and ninety-nine medical card fee through the state of Texas, so to utilize their own resources to help alleviate whatever battles they are fighting behind closed doors. Texas has a compassionate use program written by the state for cardholders. Chapter one six nine of the Texas Occupations Code allow qualified physicians to prescribe low THC cannabis to patients with certain conditions under the Texas Compassionate Use Program. According to the Texas Penal Code, Chapter four eight seven, Section four eight seven dot two zero one, counties and municipals may not prohibit low THC cannabis under enforce of rule ordinance, order, resolution, or other regulation that prohibits production, dispensing, possession of low THC as authorized by that chapter. While we all know where most of you stand and your opinions are respected, factual medical science and studies have and evidence outweigh personal opinions every single time. The city's job is to uphold the needs and wants of its citizens, whether you agree or not. Ten thousand five hundred and forty people, and even more now, as we continue to register people to vote, will be at the polls in two thousand and twenty-four to vote this in. Verifying the needed amount of signatures, I'd say the people, your people, and our people, have spoken loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council members. I'm Christopher Parsons. I live in Lubbock. A total of ten thousand-plus signatures was received with this petition, but the petition only needed four thousand eight hundred to get passed onto this committee. Mr. McBreyer has already said he would vote against it, which is nothing to say before he meets with his constituency in this public meeting. And in my correspondence with him, he references that the City of Lubbock was created by the state of Texas, ignoring the fact that it was the early citizens who petitioned for the incorporation of Lubbock. And he doesn't mention that the state of Texas has delegated certain powers, certain powers, to the City of Lubbock. And with that delegation comes a certain autonomy. And with that autonomy comes the ability of Lubbock to decriminalize low-level amounts of marijuana. The City of Lubbock has been choosing when or when not to enforce marijuana laws already. I've talked to several police officers who say their superiors choose when or when not to enforce marijuana laws. Mr. McBreyer ignores the difference between legalization and decriminalization. And there is a difference. There is a difference in classification between what is legal and what is decriminalized in our legal system here in the state and in the nation. Decriminalization of marijuana drops criminal sanctions for the use and possession under a certain amount. A decriminalized drug is still illegal, but the punishment would not be a criminal sanction like arrest or incarceration. Offenders may still face a silver fine or require drug education or treatment. The production and sale of a decriminalized drug is still prosecutable by law. Drug possession that is decriminalized by a state still allows the drug to remain federally controlled and regulated, and also state-controlled and regulated. All that means is decriminalization doesn't contravene state law like Mr. McBreyer thinks. This argument is an old argument that goes back to the mid-seventies, when Alaska in seventy-five decriminalized marijuana. It goes back to ninety-one, when the first city in the nation did it. Mr. McBreyer has already gone public with his intention not to follow his constituency. I'm talking to the members of council, of this council, who did not come out publicly with that opinion. This petition for the citizens of the city, remember, this is an old argument from the mid-seventies. It has been passed through this nation's court system and state's court systems throughout the country. One of the closest cities, big cities near us, Albuquerque, had the very same argument, go through the same process, except the council members passed it on to the mayor, who vetoed it. That mayor and all the other council members who voted against her are no longer in their positions because of their vote against it. And the voters did end up electing or did end up passing this through state law. There is a legal difference between legal and decriminalization. If this was a law to legalize weed, the opponents to it would have a point. They would have recourse toward it. But the City of Lubbock is a separate entity than the state of Texas. The Lubbock Police Department is a separate entity from the Texas, from the Texas State Police. The City of Lubbock has authority over certain decisions. Let's make sure the citizens of this country's voices are heard. Thank you.
Mr. Parsons, would you mind giving me your address, please?
Yeah, sixteen oh four Avenue W, apartment four, Lubbock, Texas, seven nine four oh one.
Thank you.
Good morning.
My name is Paul Bullock. I live at twenty-two fifteen Thirty-Second Street in Lubbock, Texas. My son Clint was five years old in nineteen eighty-one when he began having petit mal seizures. These seizures occurred multiple times during the day and night. We took Clint to the only pediatric neurologist in Lubbock, Dr. Richard Katnick. Dr. Katnick prescribed a cocktail of barbiturates, including phenobarbital, Dilantin, and depakane, to just mention a few. After months of trying different drugs and combinations of drugs, the seizures were kept under control. The cost of controlling the seizures was turned into a, my son was turned into a slow-thinking, slow-moving child who could not fit with the doubt, with the normal children's learning abilities or motor skills. We watched the downward spiral continue as we were unable to keep Clint in regular public schools, but rather had to place him in a special learning school. Finally, we got him into the Lubbock Independent School District late in his elementary learning years, and he was placed in a special education throughout his high, his career. After high school, Clint could not find employment, but I was, but was given a few jobs with friends of mine in different lines of work. Clint failed at each and every attempt to secure and keep employment. Clint never moved from my home. He was my dependent until he died in two thousand twelve on December fifteenth at the age of thirty-six. I tell you this because in nineteen seventy-one, Medical World reports that marijuana is probably the most potent anti-epileptic known in medicine. It is reported that cannabis extract is more effective than Dilantin, which was one of the drugs that my son was taking to control his seizures. When I learned of this study, I felt as though we, as a nation, had been betrayed by our government, which is entrusted with our welfare. So why were my son and millions of other children denied the opportunity to take a non-lethal drug to control their seizures? Why have Americans been denied the right to use cannabis as medicine for the past eighty-five years? In nineteen thirty-seven, the Commission of Federal Bureaus of Narcotics, the commissioner, Harry Ann Slinger, persuaded a naive Congress and an uninformed population to ban the use of cannabis. Then, people with money and influence pooled their support for cannabis prohibition. Wealthy and influential people like the DuPonts, Randolph Hurst, were interested in eliminating competition in the petrochemical industry and paper industry. They sided with the cannabis prohibitions in order to demonize cannabis and its users and quickly crush the competition. Harry Ann Slinger used the argument for prohibition of cannabis by saying bigoted things like, and I quote, "There are ten thousand total marijuana smokers in the United States, and most of them are Negroes, Hispanics, Filipinos, and entertainers. Their satanic jazz and swing results in marijuana use. This marijuana causes white women to seek sexual relations with Negroes and entertainers and others." Ann Slinger also referred marijuana makes darkies think they are as good as white men. And marijuana is an addictive drug which produces in its users insanity, criminality, and death. And his references to violence behavior included such quotes as, "You smoke a joint and you are likely to kill your brother," and "Marijuana is the most violence-causing drug in the history of mankind." In fact, the Congress discussed this topic for two years before passing the nineteen thirty-seven Marijuana Tax Act, and the American Medical Association was never invited to testify to the medical value of the drug, which at the time was the most widely-used ingredient in medicine of the day. It is yet another indication that the laws were based on bigotry and ignorance. The fact remains that the government has played a major role in suppressing and altering the truth about cannabis. Even Richard Nixon's top adviser, John Ehrlichman, said, "You understand what I am saying? We knew we couldn't make it illegal to be against the war or black, but by getting the public to associate the hippies with marijuana and the blacks with heroin, and then criminalizing both heavily, we could disrupt their communities, we could arrest their leaders, raid their homes, break up their meetings, and vilify them night after night on evening news." We, did we know we were lying about the drugs? Of course, we did. Our government has used these deceitful laws for eighty-five years to punish and persecute certain segments of American society. We have been stripped of the rights that were wrongfully taken from us in nineteen thirty-seven. The United States government has known since nineteen seventy-four that cannabis cures cancer. In nineteen seventy-two, Richard Nixon wanted a larger budget for the war on drugs. He thought if he proved cannabis caused lung cancer like cigarettes do, he would get the support he needed. He gave the Medical College of Virginia two years to study the effects of THC on the human body. In nineteen seventy-four, the study was completed. It turns out that THC, when ingested in highly-concentrated forms, such as eating cannabis oil, will attack and mutate cells in the body while strengthening and rejuvenating healthy cells. They found the perfect cure for cancer. It worked fast, it worked well, it worked on many different forms of cancer in all stages, and it had zero harmful side effects, unlike chemo, which deteriorates the entire body and kills one in five patients. When Richard Nixon saw the results of the study, of the report, he was, he was said to be furious and threw the study in the trash and all public cannabis research and grants exclusive rights to major pharmaceutical companies, who set up to develop synthetic forms of THC. In fact, the United States government holds patent six six three zero five zero seven, which is the patent on synthetic cannabis. What kind of men are these that would hide this information from the very people they have pledged to protect and govern over fairly? How many Americans have died because of these heartless men? This is nothing short of crimes against humanity. We have suffered as a nation because of the laws put in place in nineteen thirty-seven by bigots and greedy industrialists. Millions have been jailed, millions more punished in monetary and prohibitionary systems that have only hurt our citizens rather than help them. Since the demise of my five-year-old son's health, I have studied the medical benefits of cannabis and continued to ask myself why a government would be so cruel as to deprive its citizens of a plant-based medicine that would have been used for now for three thousand years by people worldwide without even a single death due to its, to overdose. Why would they outlaw a plant-based medicine is now, that's now being used for countless illnesses, mental health, and mental health problems? For almost a century, our government has tried unsuccessfully to bury the plant and its value away from the sight of its people. Shame on them for what they have caused in human life and suffering. Because I have fought against this unrighteous war on drugs and nonviolent cannabis use, I am considered an outcast, not only because of my beliefs, but because of ignorance. This is an unanswered mystery and a burden of conscience that I will live forever because my son was given drugs that took his sensibility away from him. What can we do when our representatives refuse to even examine the evidence? And even when the evidence is undeniable, the truth is denied by powerful men and women, and lies take hold and cause horrible destruction? It seems our only option is for millions upon millions of people to refuse to obey unjust laws and create civil disobedience which takes root. Billions of dollars have been spent and wasted, and millions of peaceful people punished because of a powerful people in high places that care not for the truth or the will of the people they govern. Now, around seventy percent of American people favor an end to cannabis prohibition, but our politicians refuse to honor the will of the people. So Americans will continue to be subjected to unjust laws held up by unwilling, by willing accomplices. Someday, the will of the people will rule the day, but unfortunately for now, American citizens will be punished by laws that take away their life, their liberties, their pursuit of happiness. We are ruled by laws that should never have been enacted in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, council. Is this, is this close enough? Sounds light this morning. Joshua Schenckles, twenty-six oh four Forty-Seventh Street. Thank you all for being here this morning. I, as you know, am a board member and managing director of Lubbock Compact and one of the individuals that brought this petition before you this morning. Many of our peers have already spoken. I would associate myself to many of their remarks in the interest of time. I also know that our organization has already put forward an official position that we think this issue is of a magnitude and substance that it probably should just go forward to a vote, and I would reendorse that position and feel confident about that. But today, the decision is yours, so I hope you will forbear me to put a little bit of information in front of you and add some context to what you have already seen. First, I'd like to make note that we didn't write this ordinance. An attorney wrote this ordinance, a group of attorneys, actually, and one of whom is a former city attorney. So this was crafted to be in accord with the state constitution, with the Texas Criminal Code, and it was also crafted to be in accord with our own city code, which was studied in the creation of this. And I would also want you to know that our consulting attorneys went through several draft versions of this because we sent this back for changes many times. And one of the things that I hope that you would notice about the ordinance, and I would suggest anybody who hasn't read it in its entirety to read it, is that this isn't an Austin ordinance brought to Lubbock. This is an ordinance crafted for Lubbock with many provisions within it meant to align to our own city's policies, the character and nature of our city, and also to give a lot of options to go around this so that enforcement can be conducted when it's necessary. Which is to say that, in my opinion, in our organization's opinion, that this is a very well-calibrated ordinance for our city, and I say that now to get me to the thing that I really wanted you to know about this and the context that I really wanted to get around this for your consideration, is that I'd like you to know a little bit more about the signatories to it and what our experience was with them in our fieldwork between ourselves and our more than forty organizers that were helping do this. The first is that we heard so many stories from the public, and the one, it doesn't really fit in the sort of delivery of this speech, but the one that connects to how well-calibrated the ordinance is, is that we heard so many stories of capricious enforcement of this law within our own city. Almost every person that came forward that had some personal experience with this was either being, or was either bringing forward stories to us about being let off the hook for this issue because, in fact, there's a ton of legal products that look and smell exactly like cannabis, and they already note that the police are enforcing this differently on the streets, and other people with similar minor infractions having their lives messed up over the same exact circumstances. And so, one thing that we hope you would note in us bringing this ordinance forward to you is that what we're attempting to do here is slide a floor under this and create equal protection of the law, an equal application of the law in our city in a way that we're currently not seeing and experiencing, or at least is the testimony of the many, many people that we interacted with. I'd want you to know something about the common public reception of this. We were at maybe hundreds of events in the course of this sixty-day period, and the ten thousand signatures that were delivered to you is not actually a representation of like forty thousand casual passing interactions and three out of four people saying no to us. It's actually a true representation of a detailed interaction with probably more like thirteen thousand people, the vast majority of which becoming signatories to this petition. Council, we heard so many stories of people's pain and trauma, things that they were dealing with in their life and having to cope with, so many moving stories that people had to tell us about how they were helped by this product. My own was a guy that had a kind of a degenerative disease. I forget what it was right now, but his limbs were kind of like locked up, and this was one of the only things that he would experience relief from. Is that somebody we want to be criminalizing? I don't think it is. Council, we also heard so many stories of people's joy and pleasure, the way that they bond with others in their lives, the way that they enjoy themselves and have fun. And I think everybody can intrinsically understand the value in that regardless of whether that's your cup of tea or not. But what I'd want you to know is probably the bigger bucket of signatories on here are people who have no experience with marijuana or any cannabis product whatsoever. They're just people that don't want their neighbors to go to jail over something that nobody gives a hoot about anymore, if they're otherwise noncriminal people. That's probably the biggest bucket of signatories on here are people who, it's no skin off their nose either way. They just don't want their money and resources and police time wasted on something that is not a bother. Today, you're going to make some decisions about people's hopes and dreams, their medicine, things they fear, things that have wrecked some of their family members' lives, things that have helped their family members' lives, decisions that will affect their families, their friends, and will certainly have implications for their pain and their joy. So I hope in your consideration of this that you take that in mind. Thank you very much for your time. things they fear, things that have wrecked some of their family members' lives, things that have helped their family members' lives, decisions that will affect their families, their friends, and will certainly have implications for their pain and their joy. So I hope in your consideration of this that you take that in mind. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schenckles.
Morning, Mayor. Counsel, Adam Hernandez, Seventy-four oh one Avenue X, and I am the Communications Chair for Lubbock Compact. So I will first and foremost start out my statement today by once again calling out the fact that this public hearing, Mayor, is happening at nine AM on a weekday when we know for a fact that many people cannot show up. I hate to sound like a broken record every time I come up here, but you do it every time we come up here when it's something that a large majority of people want, that we feel like you just don't want to hear from a bunch of them. And so, fair enough, but I am going to call it out.
Mr. Hernandez, I'm going to ask you to keep your
I'm going on to it.
...public comments to, and make sure your phone is silenced.
Yep.
And keep your public comments to what is here for the public hearing.
Yep, that was the only disclaimer I needed. So thank you, Mayor.
The disclaimer is keep your comments
Sure.
...to what's in front of the council today.
Can I continue?
You may continue.
Thank you. All right, so we've heard from some passionate people here this morning. I'm not going to rehash all of the things. I didn't come here to keep you all for a whole long time. I just want to talk about a couple of things that have been brought up when it concerns the legality of this ordinance and the authority of counsel to do something about it. Pretty much through all of the news stories, we heard time and again, counsel had no comment. But when it comes to things such as sanctuary city, we're perfectly fine passing things that are so-called against state law. So there's some hypocrisy there. But on the state law, as you've heard, we're a home rule city. We do have the authority to do this, and the heart of our ordinance is pretty simple. We just don't think people should go to jail for personal use of marijuana here in Lubbock. And what I would like to impart to you, Mayor, and counsel, is that we will not go on a campaign to tell everybody that you all want people to get locked up for marijuana, personal marijuana use, if you vote this down today. We're not going to do that because, as I said in my last statement, we feel that this issue is too complex, too nuanced. It impacts too many people in too many ways for this decision to rest on your shoulders. I don't think that's fair to you, and I don't think it's fair to our public. You've heard the numbers of how many people have signed this, you've heard the stories, and that's all there really is to it. And so, I hope that you all will vote this down here today for whatever reason you may want to do that or not, and so that we can put this to the ballot so that people can make that decision. And so, that's my only appeal to you all. I do want to end by saying I do thank you all for your service. I know I have criticisms from time to time, but I also have praise. And I'm thankful for you all even allowing the public to come and talk, and that's really all I have to say. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. And we are still on those in favor of the ordinance.
Morning, counsel. Nick Harpster, Nineteen Twenty-One Sixty-first Street. As a professor of criminal justice, I look at things from the academic and research side, besides the disparities in race and arrests, which we have already seen addressed. This fact also, the fact also exists that low-level marijuana arrests take significant amount of time away from officers that can be used working on the much more serious crimes. A typical arrest takes an officer off the streets for an average of about eight hours. It is often claimed that crime increases after a decriminalization policy is passed. This can likely be explained by the fact that these officers are now freed up to work on more serious crimes and other things other than a small marijuana infraction. It is well-known that marijuana users are rarely violent crime offenders or crime offenders at all. Overall, the cost savings, while some studies say that it is negligible, cannot be ignored. Many of these studies do ignore the fact that of these officers' time taken away off the streets for other serious crimes, and the fact that this also takes costs in the community as far as probation and parole and things unrelated to the actual initial arrest. All I ask of you today is that you vote for this ordinance to reduce the burden on the marginalized groups in the community and provide a much-needed relief to our law enforcement officers in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Ian Timmons. My address is sixty-one oh seven One Hundred and Third Street. Thank you guys for listening to this today. I don't want to repeat anything that's already been said. The history of cannabis prohibition is quite scary and kind of filled with racism, and I think that's an important thing to note, but I'm just going to skip to some of the things that I haven't heard yet. I know that public safety is a very big concern for the current council, as it should be. Without our safety, we really have nothing else. This petition can strengthen the relationship that the community has with its law enforcement officers if we can allow our officers to focus on actual crime rather than trivial possession that creates a rift between officers and those who may use. The current laws turn nonviolent citizens into potential threats and criminals. It would allow our entire force to prioritize actual violent crimes and real criminal organizations rather than waste time and resources on nonviolent offenders who possess a small amount of weed. Prohibition empowers the actual criminals and the drug cartels. This petition would also alleviate the administrative resources that go into writing reports, booking, charging, holding, and prosecuting offenders. As of September twenty twenty-three, the Lubbock County Detention Center was operating at full capacity with two hundred and nine inmates staying outside of Lubbock County, staying outside of Lubbock County, which was an additional four point eight million increase to the budget, I do believe. Also, the local prosecutor shortage is leaving Lubbock County unable to effectively prosecute crime. For those reasons, I think it's most dire importance to prioritize real crime and violent offenders. The disproportional effects to our Black and Latino communities would also be alleviated, allowing family units to operate at a higher capacity. We must make efforts to heal those communities who are economically disadvantaged rather than criminalize them for nonviolent offenses, furthering the cycle of injustice. These offenses also affect our local job markets as young people are charged with misdemeanors before they can even really get started, setting back their potential and denying our community of their would-be contributions. COVID highlighted the importance of local government. As some states fight to gain more control and power, it becomes obvious that a free population is a sign of a healthy relationship between the government and its constituents. I think legalization is inevitable with twenty-five states already there. The question is, how much longer are we going to demonize this plant, criminalize nonviolent users, and delay the benefits from additional tax revenue? Decriminalizing is the first step. We need reasonable laws that make sense. We need to be advocates of rationality and vow to create a brighter future, whether that means creating new laws that confront future problems or reexamining old laws that no longer hold weight in these changing times. That's all I got, but thank you for your time, and thank you for your service, and I look forward to what the future holds.
Thank you, Mr. Timmons.
Good morning. I am surprising myself. I didn't think I was going to say anything. I have no prepared remarks. I am a former Navy wife. I am a retired schoolteacher. I'm a borderline elderly lady. I'm not Black, I'm not Brown, and I'm not a marijuana user. But I do agree with some statements that we have all heard, which is, I do not want my family and friends, who may happen to be marijuana users, to be criminalized because of their personal use of marijuana. Pardon me if I slip into teacher discipline mode. It's easy to do when people are talking while I'm talking.
Would you please state your name, that's where Oh, yeah, I'd be happy to. And your address.
Yes, Sarah Stennett, S-T-E-N-N-E-T-T, and my address is thirty-five oh eight Seventy-seventh Drive. So I want you to know that there are people who are for this that look just like me and just like some of you, because you might not be aware of that. I know you guys and ladies have a reputation to uphold. You may not be talking about this with your group, but I decided to, and I was very surprised by what I found. I even printed off several copies of the petition so I could take it around with me, and I only had one person decline to sign because they didn't agree with it. Everybody else signed, and they looked just like me. Family, friends, my family practice doctor signed it? They all wanted to sign and thought it was a good idea. So if you're not asking your constituents what they think because they look like me, let me tell you the bubble I live in. You know I'm white, you know I'm old, I come from a very conservative background, Church of Christ, for heaven's sakes. So I had to be courageous and brave when I decided to break out of my bubble and start talking to people and ask them what they thought. And I was so encouraged by what they did think. And I have found people that are regular people, just like me, who think this is the thing to do. And so, I just want you to look at me and try to see your own constituents, and if they look like me, and if they look like you, talk to them, because chances are, they may not feel the same way you do. Thank you for the chance.
Thank you, Ms. Stennett. All right. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the ordinance, you may step forward at this time.
Thank you. I'm Don Inger, and we're talking about freedom this morning, and I think I have freedom too. And I have the freedom to drive down a street in Lubbock and hope that there's not anybody high on marijuana headed in my direction from the other way. And I think that's plenty to worry about. We're talking about safety, and we're talking about freedom. Well, I need that freedom too. I have a lot of family, a lot of friends, and I don't want them killed by somebody that wants to take marijuana. And we all know that the four ounces that we're talking about, that's just a start. If you vote to go along with that, they'll be back in no time at all saying we need to raise that or do completely away. In fact, one of them mentioned that the goal is to make marijuana totally legal. You might as well make drunk driving leaving legal too, because it's the same thing.
Listen, sure, I think Mr. Inger and everyone else is quiet when others are talking in the audience, so let's refrain from making comments in the audience, please.
I'm a member of Rotary, as Latrell is, and in Rotary, we started a program a few years ago to help the hungry kids in Lubbock. And we were told that fifty percent of the kids in the school at Friendship are hungry. That sounds like a big number, but that's what they told us. And so, we started a backpack program in which we buy backpacks and we fill them up with food, and that has grown to something that's costing in the neighborhood, I think, Latrell, of thirty-four thousand dollars. And so, every year, it gets bigger and bigger. Well, I'm a Gideon, and we pass out Bibles. And last week, we were at OL Slate and Junior High, on the public sidewalk, and we were passing out Bibles. And the principal came out, and he's a real nice fellow, and we had a good conversation. And I said, let me ask you something. I said, what percentage of your students do you think are hungry? He said ninety-two percent. Ninety-two percent are hungry? That came from the principal. So what I'm leading to is we all know that the less restrictions you have on marijuana, you're going to have more people spending more money on marijuana and less money on their family. And I think that's a shame and disgrace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Inger. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the ordinance?
My name is Teresa Clark. I live at four thousand and three One Hundred and Twenty-fourth Street. There are two elements I'd like to speak about. The first would be the personal. I think there's been reference to you not hearing from your constituents, and so we'd like to make sure that constituent voice is heard as well, which is that my family history is in Colorado, so you know where this is going, right? We've lived this story for over eleven years now in Colorado, and it started with a progression similar to what we're talking about today. And I'll just tell you two stories very close to my own family. The first is my cousin, who at the age of nine began using marijuana as an alternative to some medical and health behavioral things that she was facing. And it was, we didn't know then what we know now, and that progressed for her into the use of many other substances, and she became an absolute threat to public safety and evolved into lots of mental health issues. And my family would always say, we know she's going to die, we just don't know how, and we hope she doesn't kill anyone else when it happens. It was a great concern to our family, and I have regret to tell you, she did die. She died by being shot in the face by her boyfriend while they were doing drugs. Only a short while later, my nephew was on his way to work one morning on a bicycle because he didn't have enough money for a vehicle, and was run over by an eighteen-year-old that was at five times the legal limit of marijuana in the state of Colorado. And so, I share those because that's what your constituents have concern for. But I want to make sure that what we're talking about here today isn't just personal opinions about marijuana, its medical use, its impact, and all of that, but rather that we're talking about the ordinance, because this is a legislative process that's beautiful, that we can come and we can speak and share, but really, the task at hand is, is this ordinance legal? Can you pass it? Can you vote yes or no today? And what I want to say is that we, I'm thankful you all are well-informed, and I know there's an executive session to discuss this further, so I'm sure that research will be provided for the questions you still have, but a city cannot issue a law or an ordinance that countermands the state's penal code. It cannot happen. And so, I am thankful that you all will look at that in great detail and in understanding that will place your votes. I also hope that our city would not raise important resources on a vote for something, again, that is not enforceable. Lastly, because I was very involved in the Sanctuary City for the Unborn ordinance, I do want to answer some of those comments that have been made, just to clarify, that that ordinance did not ask for the same thing this ordinance is asking for. This ordinance is asking for the city and the law enforcement officials to not enforce a law that's on the books. That was not what the ordinance for the Sanctuary City for the Unborn did. It asked for a private enforcement mechanism between citizens. So they are not comparable, they are not the same. And with that, I just want to say thank you for your time, and we look forward to hearing your votes.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Anyone else? All right, we will now close the public hearing. Item one, as pertaining to the ordinance first reading on item two. And at this time, city council will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding the pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement and to hold consultation with attorney under section five five one point zero seven one of the Texas Government Code. On coming back in from executive session, then we will begin with item number three, taking up that vote, and then moving again to ceremonial items in our call to order for the regular meeting. We are in recess. All right. Good morning again. We are back from executive session, back into, we are convening back in the city council chambers in open session, and at this time, we will take up item number three, which is the ordinance first reading. Consider the ordinance within the city of Lubbock. Consider the ordinance within the city of Lubbock creating Freedom Act Lubbock, including measures to reduce enforcement of low-level marijuana offenses. We have had and opened the public hearing, and then we have closed the public hearing. So at this time, I would take a motion to approve agenda item number three. Thank you, Ms. Joy.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. So we have a motion in front of us, and we have a second. I think I'll start by saying, you know, no matter if you agree or disagree with something, that's a lot of work that was put into this. When you get ten thousand signatures and when you go through the efforts that people in our community have, it's, maybe it's the wrong word, but it's kind of cool to see. It's cool to see how democracy works in our community and in our country, when I think that that doesn't happen anywhere else in the world. So, again, big deal that you all got this forward, and I know there's a ton of work that goes into campaigning, there's a ton of work that goes into getting signatures. So well done on getting this put forward. I will say, I'm going to stick to me with legality issues on this. I will be voting against this. I think this needs to go to the voters. I think that the proposed ordinance is directly in conflict with state law. I do not think it's appropriate that we try to contradict state law in this manner. My conclusion is that the proposed ordinance actually violates the Texas Constitution, is in direct conflict with state law, and therefore it's void and unenforceable. Any change to laws of the state in regards to the possession of marijuana must be addressed by the Texas Legislature. And until and unless amendments are made by the Legislature, the city of Lubbock is curtailed by current state laws on this issue. I'd also like to thank Chad and his team, the City Attorney's Office, for the effort that they put into this and researching this. And so I will be voting no on this proposed ordinance. Mr. McBrayer?
Yeah, I just, again, I appreciate the effort that's gone into this, and I appreciate the opinions and the emotion that goes into this. I've tried to explain the fact that I believe we are all bound by an oath we take, and I take oaths very seriously. And oftentimes, my oath requires me to do things I might not otherwise agree with politically or legislatively. So oaths constrain us, and you are not constrained in your opportunity to ask the citizens to vote for something. If you think that's appropriate, that'll happen. But I, and I believe many people up here feel that they're constrained by their oaths. And when we believe that something is void and unenforceable and contrary to state law, there's nothing we can do about that as a city. We are established by the state, and we have to enforce the laws of the state. I don't buy the distinction between legalization and decriminalization. I don't think there's really a distinction between those two arguments. But, so for that reason, I just do not feel like I can vote for it, and will not be voting for it. But I do appreciate everyone who's worked on it, and there are other things at other times we may be able to agree on. I do agree with you, though, that we want to see the laws that are on the books enforced equally across all groups. I think that's a valid concern, and we're working to make sure that that happens in our city. We want that to be true in our city. So I appreciate that concern.
Ms. Joy?
Yep, on what Mr. McBrayer has said, and it is McBrayer, somebody mispronounced your name, so it's McBrayer. The first oath that I took was to become an attorney. And it says specifically, "I will uphold the laws of the Constitution of the United States and the state and the laws thereof." That's the first one I took, and I've not violated that during my substantial nears of practice. The second oath that I took is the one when I came on council in two thousand and twelve, and it is basically the same oath that we take. And I like Mr. McBrayer and the mayor, we do not take those lightly. And so because of that, I cannot vote for this proposal.
Mr. Massengill?
Thank you, Mayor. Unlike my three colleagues that just spoken before me, I'm not an attorney nor do I play one on TV, but I echo their, thank goodness you're right, Ms. Joy, I echo their thoughts on this. I take the oath very seriously to uphold the law and the fact that the unconstitutionality of this and the fact that there doesn't seem to be any clear enforcement on this, I can't support it today.
Just a minute, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. I have a, I've got a call. Is there a second at this time? Ms. Joy? All in favor of call for the vote at this time, please say aye.
Aye.
I didn't catch that down here. Was that three?
I guess I want to speak.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia? We have a motion and a second to call for the vote. I heard Ms. Patterson called Ms. Joy second. Was there another aye down here? Okay. Motion fails three, four. Ms. Martinez-Garcia, we'll go ahead and move forward with your comments.
I'm going to be as, for me, I really strive to always be objective. I guess I'm part of the marginalized group, and so one of the first things, and for anybody to think that I would sit on this dais and not do my due diligence of doing the research, one of the first requests that I made was, I want to see the numbers. I want to see the ethnic breakdown of the people that are being given citations for this claim that you guys made. And I didn't see the numbers reflected that you claimed. And it's important for me to always speak up for my community. And the fact that I don't see more Hispanics here or Black community, because that was your focus. I had people going, hearing, when you went door-to-door, hearing all this stuff about Hispanics, Hispanics, Blacks, Blacks, Hispanics, Blacks, a lot of misinformation that was shared with them. And for me, yeah, for me, I didn't appreciate that. Where's the endorsement from all the Hispanic and Black organizations? We have problems in our community, everybody does. Now, you already had your chance to speak. I know you want to speak, but I'm getting a chance to speak now. And, you know, if there's a discrimination, I guarantee you, I'm going to call on it. And I think that our community is dealing with a lot of different issues, and they have a lot of needs. I heard somebody say something about hopes and dreams. You know, I would like to see you work on projects that are going to help fulfill hopes and dreams, and I don't know if this is the project that's going to build on hopes and dreams. It's not going to work for me. The other thing that I heard that somebody said, and, you know, by the way, I only got two calls. One was for and one was against. So it makes it difficult to make a decision based on that. And I expected to see more people, I was prepared for that. You made a comment also about how the nine o'clock, there's never going to be a right time for everybody, but we're doing everything that is required of us. We have to be transparent, and I'm sure everyone wants to move on, but I have to address that because I have to be here at nine o'clock. I also did something similar to what you did in the past, trying to get a street name after the great American hero Caesar Chavez. I had to get signatures as well, and we worked really hard for that. And I understand your concerns about things, but the bottom line is, there's never a right time, and we're doing our best to make sure that we make this easy for every citizen to have access. That's the thing. The doors are open for anybody that wants to come, and we did that today. So nine o'clock, six o'clock, four o'clock, two o'clock, it's never a right time for everybody, but we're doing our best to give you accessibility. As for me, in my research also, and I'm going to stick to some things that I thought were interesting, and this for me is probably one of the biggest things, is that when we're talking about creating misinformation and confusion, and by the way, I also had to take an oath as a journalist. But this what was interesting to me, so Lubbock Police Department is only one police agency in Lubbock. The Texas Tech Police Department has authority over the campus with about forty thousand students. Lubbock Christian University has its own police department. Lubbock Independent School District has their police department. Lubbock Cooper ISD has their own police department. Friendship ISD has their own police department. University Medical Center has their own police department. The Sheriff's Office and DPS also have jurisdictions in Lubbock. In the end, only Lubbock PD could be impacted by the proposed ordinance. And this is going to cause great confusion by a public that was already given so much misinformation. They wouldn't know if they could use misdemeanor amounts of marijuana, marijuana, cannabis, whatever you want to call it, with no enforcement. So I just felt like it was very confusing for me. And also, I concur with the mayor that when it comes to constitutionality and legality, I mean, it's very difficult to enforce such a thing. So I too will not vote to support this, but I encourage the voters to come out and do their due diligence. Thank you.
Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, I just, everybody's kind of putting out their opinion here, so I just quickly wanted to agree with the mayor and kind of what's been said up here and echoed, that, you know, our charter is very clear, and that we have language that says, "No charter, any ordinance passed under said charter shall contain any provision inconsistent with the Constitution of the state." So, I mean, that, the legality of this, you know, makes it unconstitutional and void and unenforceable for the city of Lubbock. And I also want to applaud Lubbock Compact and their group. I mean, the effort it does take, this takes a lot, and that they have a lot of passion, and I do appreciate passion when you have, you know, goals and ideas that you want to see changed. But, you know, I think at the city level, this is unenforceable. I think it is a problem to ask the Lubbock Police Department, because they take an oath to uphold the state constitution and the laws of the state as well, that it puts them in a challenging position because they take that oath as well. And we've talked about oaths up here many times. I also took an oath as a physician to do no harm, and so that's why we are up here listening. We want to listen to everybody, you know, from the medical side. We can argue medical points all day long, but that's not what we're here for. We're here to look at what can be enforced in the city, and at this point, I think this is unconstitutional and unenforceable, and we'll not be supporting it.
All right, thank you, Dr. Wilson. I do had a call for a vote. We have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion on agenda item two? All right. All in favor of approval of agenda item three, please say aye. All in favor of? All right. All opposed, please say nay. Nay. All right. Motion fails zero seven. All right, we will now move to our ceremonial items and moving into agenda item four. And I'm pleased this morning that we have Reverend Rachel Petty with Saint Christopher's Episcopal Church to lead us this morning in prayer. As Reverend Petty moves forward, if you would all please stand, and once the prayer and invocation is done, if you would please remain standing for the pledges led by Mayor Protim, Ms. Sheila Patterson-Harris.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you remain standing and join us in saying the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Reverend Petty, thank you so much for being with us this morning. We really appreciate you. Thank you for your time. All right, we now have, moving to citizen comments, we had no citizen comments this morning, so we will now move to agenda item six point one, which are minutes from the September twenty-seventh Lubbock Economic Development Alliance as the October twenty-fourth regular city council meeting. I have an approval from Ms. Martinez-Garcia, or a motion to approve. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All in favor of approval of six point one, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, six point one carries seven to zero. We now move to our consent agenda, and we do have one pool today. This is going to be seven point one two regarding traffic operations and some reduction in speed limits that was proposed by our traffic commission. Mr. Atkinson, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We'll walk through these. We have a list of items to where we are asking to lower the speed limits. The first would be on eighty-second from University Avenue to Avenue P. This is a reduction from fifty to forty-five, and that will then put the speed limit on the fully developed parts of eighty-second, all to be the same as you move to the west. Now, moving to the east, still on eighty-second, from Avenue P to Elm, we're recommending a reduction from fifty mile an hour to forty, so this one a little bit farther down. Reason being, probably number one most important, that segment of eighty-second has a crash rate that's about three point one times greater than the average. Largely, that is due to a large number of driveways that front it. So from P to the interstate, you have numerous multifamily developments that exit on the north side of the road onto eighty-second. On the east side of Interstate twenty-seven, you have those driveway conflicts at a pretty regular occurrence almost all the way to Martin Luther King. So pulling this down, we think, is going to help us with that, and of course, we'll keep an eye on it. The little segment of Frankfurt that is from thirty-fourth to just south of Forty-first Street, this is that little segment that was kind of cut off by the loop a number of years ago. Even though Frankfurt through the rest of town is an arterial, it's a collector's street for that segment. Homes on one side, commercial on the other, so bringing that down from forty to thirty-five. We also have one on Milwaukee from Fourth down to Thirty-fourth. This is dropping from fifty to forty-five. That will match then the remainder of Milwaukee as you continue south through the developed areas. Final one is on Slide, and this is from eighty-second to a hundred and Fourth Street, and this is pulling it down from fifty to forty-five also, thus matching the adjoining segments of Slide through there. As the mayor mentioned, these have been reviewed and ultimately recommended for your approval by your citizens' traffic committee. Prior to that, your traffic engineering group here did all of their required work to include the speed studies, the study of crash data, and related items to come with these recommendations. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Ms. Joy?
Mr. Atkinson, is it possible if a citizen has a concern about a speed limit that they can contact the city and request a study?
Yes, ma'am, they can. So if anybody that's listening or watching has concern about a particular segment, give us a call, and they're welcome to call my office, and I'll direct it to the appropriate department, seven seven five two zero one six. Often, we will go out and do just some radar studies at first to see, you know, is this really what it looks like? If so, we can do additional enforcement through the Lubbock Police Department, the bigger speed studies, and come up with some recommendations. So don't hesitate.
Other than changing the sign, how do we let people know that these are being lowered before they get into their habit of going the speed limit they go?
Certainly, we'd encourage folks to really watch for the signage. We will put out some social media on these changes, and I think you'll find a little bit of tolerance when we first change, but let's remember, these changes are all safety-related, so we really encourage people, please pay attention.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. So in other words, I think Mr. Massengill is thinking that all of these are going to stay at seventy-five miles an hour? I've driven with Mr. Massengill, I've seen it. I don't think that any reduction is going to assist him, but at any rate, are there any other questions of Mr. Atkinson? But at any rate, are there any other questions of Mr. Atkinson on agenda item 5.12? Oh, I've got several. I'm sorry, the, I don't know what's happening here. All right, Mr. McBrayer, and then Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Okay, I too thought this was a somewhat important thing to talk about, especially the reduction from, most of the reductions are five miles an hour, but you have the one of 10 miles an hour. And so I'm gonna assume the traffic management department just analyzes data and gives it to the citizens' traffic commission. They don't recommend the speed limit, or do they?
They do. There is, you would be surprised at what the prescribed engineering process is for formulating speed limits or changing them. So yes, traffic engineering goes out, they do the studies, they do the speed studies, evaluate it, and then they make those recommendations specifically back to the traffic commission.
And do you know whether or not their recommendation was to lower it to full 10 miles an hour, or?
It was. I have my phone a friend in the front row there.
Okay, I just, that's the one that's gonna catch a lot of people, I think, a full 10 mile an hour speed. So just to make sure that people are made aware of that speed difference. So that's my only concern. Nobody likes surprise tickets, you know?
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Yes, sir. Mr. Brayer, I will say there was extensive discussion with the CTC on this specific section, where it went from down by 10 miles an hour, but ultimately, they did all come to an agreeance that this was the correct thing to do after discussion.
And that is correct, or is it three times greater?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Any other questions, Mr. McBrayer? All right, Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whoever outdirected this to Mr. Atkinson, with regard to the east 82nd Street, would you remind me what the speed limit is on the east side of I-27? Do you have that information?
I believe it is 50 when you cross under.
Okay. And my additional question is, why is there the change just between University and Elm? There's two different changes, but they're still, so that the remaining portion of East 82nd will go back up to 50?
Well, the piece from, if we're walking to the west, from P back to University is gonna come down to 45, and then there are 45 through the rest of that segment going west. The slowest piece will be to the east.
That's what I'm asking, so where it says speed limit is 40 between P and Elm, and then there's nothing, will that remain 50 miles an hour?
Oh, the piece east of Elm, I'm sorry, I answered the wrong question. John, can you help with that?
Yes, ma'am. So the differences in these two sections, so east of Elm doesn't have the propensity of driveways and residential along the entire route, so it's primarily undeveloped right now. There's very few driveways. So the US limits too, although we looked at it, did not say that that's what we should go with, and we felt like it did not need to change at this time until it develops, and then we will relook at it and lower it when it's appropriate.
Okay, so that will, from Elm all the way east, MLK would go back to 50?
It is at 50, yes, ma'am. That is correct.
And I don't know if you guys have been out there lately, but they are actually developing that piece just east of Elm. So would that trigger us looking at that again, or bringing it on at a later time to ask for a change in the speed?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. We look at these, especially when we see areas getting developed, I don't know, so Slide Road was an example of where we lowered the speed limits because we had development occur. Well, we even looked at past 114th to 130th, but we didn't recommend the change because it's still undeveloped today, primarily undeveloped. It doesn't have all the traffic coming in and out of it. So as this develops, it'll receive similar attention, and we'll continue, we look at these on a yearly basis, so.
Okay, I was just gonna add something else I should have rolled it down. Oh, no, I think I'm done. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, any other questions of Mr. Atkinson? Okay. Well, at this point, we've had a consent agenda, which is agenda item 7.12, or excuse me, 7.1 through 7.20. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. I got a second by Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, 7.1 through 7.20, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Consent agenda carries seven to zero, and with that, we will be adjourned for the day.